Good evening, father, being to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Select for the Board of Health, being held at Townhouse. Myers 28th, 2022, at 6:00 P. M. The meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology as approved by the Governor. Up until July 15th, 2022. Please stand up for the pleasurable leaders.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting? Take your quarters there. Anybody on? No? Okay. Seeing none. First, I want to tell you that it's the minutes from February 28th. If we review those, we had a few corrections you wanted made.
I think it was just that one addition, right?
Yeah. Move to accept. Minutes of the February 28th.
Second.
All in favor? March, March 7th? Well, there's a lot of veteran stuff here. Did anywhere on the parade, are they doing the parade?
Right now, it's allowed.
What?
Right now, it's allowed, so we haven't heard back from Brandon yet.
March 7th? The next item on the agenda is. Next item on the agenda is a request for a poll. This place will pull by, makes you look a couple of your national grid on Bennett Road in Hampton. Says here that the pole should be made of timber reasonably straight.
Only reasonably.
Recently.
Where's it located?
Between Poles 23 and 24, and which is near House 179 and 185 between both houses.
And this is to take up slack or?
To correct the long span and upgrade the wire.
I know, I don't see a map here. Mark, do you have a comment on this?
There's a map. There's a map.
It is near your work. So no negative comment?
How far in between? There's Poles 23 and 24? They're relatively close?
So, we're, this pole will be approximately 110 feet from Pole 24 towards.
North?
It looks like 225 feet. Our normal spans today are 150 feet.
Okay.
Well, with the comment from Ivory Superintendent of no issue, would it move for approval?
Second.
Before we do that. It's wood. It's really wood down. It's straight.
Reasonably straight.
Reasonably straight.
This is a, this is a philosophical question, a theoretical question. What if we said no? What happens? Is there a procedure? Is there like an appeal?
I guess I would have to know why you would say no, if it was something that you wanted it move five feet this way or a little bit that way.
What you've done, you've asked for a small change, would you've always accommodated in that?
We just wonder it.
Wow, feeling like, oh.
I can sleep tonight, you know, I'd be way regular all night. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
See you next month.
Where are you going on vacation? Here. Next thing we got is. This other here. Show me here. Over here. Road projects.
Copy of Mark's recent. Emails on the OneDrive.
Hello, Mark. Hello.
You have not put the applause away yet, right?
No, saw a few flakes today.
Go ahead.
So, this year, what I'm trying to do is get the most. Accomplished with the money we have with costs rising. Currently and. Going forward. Just talking to representatives from Palm Pavings, they don't see it slowing down anytime very soon. So, two things I tried to do is cluster the projects to keep cost mobilization costs down. As you can see. I paired Stony Hill with Andrew and then I paired Mill Road with. A section of Summers Road. And then I wanted to carry over the North Road project. From this spring. By encumbering the money from Highway Maintenance Pavings to get that, to get that done.
Well, that money was already in last, so I think your last year construction project list, right?
Correct.
Unspent, unspent money but encumbered.
It would, yes. Yes.
But the problem might be the cost of it might have gone up soonst the time you planned on.
And it did. So, we're looking at. We're looking at, up until last year, $68 a ton for asphalt. I was making these estimates at $89 a ton, and I was told the other day that that's still gonna be too low. So, that, you know, I'm still gonna have to re-figure some of, some of these, or all of them, actually. The other, the other thing I'm trying to do to keep costs down is, this year, what I want to do is capture all of these projects into, into one bid. And when the companies see, you know, the roads are, you know, relatively close to each other, kind of clustered together, there's not a long way, long way to bring their equipment and stuff. They're more at, also a longer section of roadway, so instead of doing short sections of roadway. To just, you know, carry through, do the entire road. And, and I think we'll get much better pricing.
And they might see a better, going at it like.
Better rate, you know, bundled together, right? Correct.
Was North Road the only one that was carryover from last year? Wasn't there a couple others or?
No, North Road was the only paving project carried over. Now, the other, the other projects carried over were the drainage. So, the park, I've got. Forest Hills. And I've got, excuse me, Greenleaf.
But the parkings are a separate budget.
Right, so, yeah. So.
And this, Mark, this doesn't include like. There might be some other hundred thousand there in the state budget or.
I haven't.
They always promise it, but we never get it.
Correct, yes. And I haven't heard anything. One way or another, I guess it got voted down the first time. Yeah, they're trying to reintroduce it. There also, there may be a chance that. There may be a chance that we see some pothole money. Some winter relief money, which they did, I think in 2018 was the last time.
So that doesn't include, this is what you know you're gonna get.
Correct, yes, yep.
So everything here, all prices covered here, or what you're gonna be getting from the state chapter 90?
Yeah, so that's an estimate. That's based off what we got last year.
Right.
I'm hoping it stays the same. I'm hearing, I'm hearing that some neighboring towns are, and I don't know how they're getting their, their allotment. Because we haven't gotten our, yet. Usually they kind of go out as one of the mass mailing. But they're getting short, short change thousands, not tens of thousands, but, you know, a few thousand or whatever. And that's just due to. You've got, you've got some cities and towns in the Commonwealth that are expanding. They're putting in roads, their populations are expanding. And there's still that 200 million, so somebody's gotta get more, somebody's gotta get less, so the ones that get lesser, the ones that, that don't, don't expand.
Sounds like a plan.
And I do have an update. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. There was, there was that talk about Rockadunny Bridge, Don, and you had asked me about that a couple of meetings ago. Now, I just found out and I've got, I've got a call into the State Bridge Department Division. That, that bridge is due to go out to bid in, in a couple of months.
Well, this is the one I mentioned before, that we were notified in, you also said that bridge is one of the best ones in town.
So, I'm, yeah, so I'm confused.
Right.
It's a state, it's a state project, 1.3 million, it's gonna go out to bid. And that I know of, no cost of town, but I'm waiting to talk to him to get some details or to see if.
Can then reallocate to one that actually.
To another bridge, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But this came up before, when you notified us of this, actually, you were.
I feel like it was like.
Like, what a surprise.
Yeah.
Bridges, it wasn't even on radar.
Because we had just been under that bridge and looking at the structure and everything in it. Unless there's something else going on that I don't know about.
Maybe Steve Tyler might know something about it. I mean, if you look at the hazard part, yes, if the dam gave way, there would be a tremendous rush of water, it would be an issue right there. But there's been no hint of that, and it's in good shape. So why did this one get picked? I'm saying back to, you know, your contacts with Steve Tyler, et cetera, you know, might know where this is coming from, NVP program.
He's gonna be on next week, right? He's gonna be here next week.
So as soon as I find something out, I'll send a note out to everybody just with the information I get, but. Yeah, that kind of caught me by surprise.
All right, sounds like a plan.
So start prepping your bid packages and. If we do get the extra hundred thousand from the state, maybe that'll offset or directly rise in asphalt prices. Don't, don't put it towards anything yet, and maybe it will cover our shortfall.
Okay, and maybe I could pick maybe a couple smaller, smaller overlays or something like that in the general area and, and present that.
All right, thank you. Next, next item, we have highway union and highway superintendent contracts.
Mark has copy of the. Last version of. Contract and talked to him this morning about it and. He may have something to say at this point, but I think we're, we're there.
I'd like to just thank the board for their time and I'll be looking forward to.
See you in three years.
See you in three years, yeah.
Motion to.
I did make one recent change, just to mention. The whole business of vacation was a bit skewed. So, you'll see there, if you look at the vacation, I took out the first few years since those are past. And in his fourth, in his fourth year. He gets four weeks. And then in the seventh, yeah, the seventh year, it goes to five.
The only thing you might have done is like, you might have related to, and just to say, put the date in for when service started. So that gives us some context for these years per se. For this man, service started such and such date, and oh, it's obvious now it's year six. And I think the clarity on the compensation is much better, the percentage things, I think threw it off. Here's our base. Going forward, up, up review, made more sense. So with that being said, Mark, I want to thank you for your patience in all this, and make a motion to approve the employment agreement. For the county Hammond, why highway superintendent for the next few years.
Second.
Sign this now.
There are two copies to sign.
This one signature. He's gonna sign it too.
So two copies, one for Mark to keep and one for the town.
We are correct that the Senate is like my pothole money is there, but.
Yes. And then, of course, I've got listed more. Possibilities for ARPA and. Try to keep an ongoing list.
As we're talking about the Senate issues there, I want to bring up to the board that at some point, we'll be bringing forward a discussion of the expansion of the outdoor dining. That's in their, in their bill. They want to reauthorize that. I think other towns have already done some of that, et cetera.
I see Boston is charging 75,000 dollars.
For the north end only, though.
Man, $480 for every parking spot they take.
What was that thing? That's only Wednesday. Hey, I'll bring it up in a future meeting. Anybody here from the union?
Highway Union contract.
That, that document with a few changes today, but they were mostly stylistic and a little grammar and punctuation. There are two issues remaining, but I think if you sign, there'll be a review tomorrow and if there any correction. It'll be done. The one question that was raised this afternoon was the base pay. In the current year. That'll be, that'll be determined. I'll get another. Check on that with this, the treasurer tomorrow. And the other item is 1060. Where. I looked at the two copies that I had on my computer, one was a PDF and the other one was the Word file. When I started working on this contract, I used the Word file because I hate editing the PDF. And so in the PDF copy, what you said this afternoon is there.
Right.
It's redlined there. Yes, yes.
1020.
Yeah. So I just add that, I'll add that sentence. I could add that sentence tomorrow and.
Okay, just. Put on protocol, I prefer to sign this in the presence of the union. I mean, to me, it's a thing. There's no reason, there's no rush to invite.
You want to hold off, we'll get them to come in.
Yeah.
They've had this, and I said, come on in, and he said to me, well, we're okay.
Probably thank them for their.
I, I, okay, I'll get them to come in again.
The last time we signed it with them all here too. All right, so we'll.
We'll sign next week.
So you wanted just to prove it was correct, what the correction Bob said?
So let's just do it next week with it and do the whole thing.
Next item we have.
Street lineup.
Well, I don't know if you had further conversation with Scott after the last go around. When I spoke to him. He said that Jeff Beatty had gone out and patrolled again and found all of those new locations. And, but that isn't, those weren't on the original list.
Right, so, and that's the thing that confused me. We had this discussion last year, Don. And presented the fact with the LED savings, et cetera, we could easily add another 10, 15. Right, and then all of a sudden, they send a list of 80 lights that like added. But we already had this agreement that we were gonna lighten intersections per se and go heavily in the sessions area, et cetera. So, I don't know where they got off track per se, but we want to push this forward. As I said before, the budget can accomplish it, and actually even better now that we've gone through the winter. But, you know, usage goes down as a model, so. I don't want this dragging on, but Pam's got a list, and all of a sudden, they send another list, you don't know which one, which way to go with it. And it seemed a little confusing on the part of, I think Taran came up with the original list. Then Jeff has come after that.
And I think Jeff probably aired on the side of caution and did a wheel drive around and found.
Okay, but he quadrupled the list, and that's.
So I'll talk to.
I have one street light on North Road. Firm ones.
No. I'll, I'll speak with Scott. Come up with something.
I think National Grid is just waiting across the pole to try to speak.
They are.
The other thing, and speaking of streetlights, Bob, I brought this up a while back, that. If we wanted to, I think we should get a price from EverSource on purchasing the lights, remember? And that might be a thing, because it would qualify under ARPA that we could do that. And therefore, I hate to say it, we own them. Now we're just talking the electricity charge. Honestly, you could go back to with our current budget and light the rest of the streets. So I think it's, but I think I'd like to quote, maybe Pam could reach out to Pam Hill and say, what's the purchase price? So we just go into a rental thing. And oh, I said, we're not gonna be, should be electric.
Yeah.
But if we own the lights, we're not paying for the lease charge.
They're responsible for. I know a number of communities that have purchased the streetlights, and they think it's, it's, it was in their interest to do it.
Sure. I mean, there's a small maintenance charge, but still, you're not paying for, you know, their money.
Most of them are new now, right, in the last couple of years?
Most of them, because we all switched the LED, so they changed out the yellow.
So they're good for what, another 20 year maybe?
Sure.
What's the lifespan of the light, do you know?
I'm not sure, but that's all the 50s, I've gotten down to the 20 LED already. I'm not sure about the 250s or, I think there's only a couple 400s at intersections, but. The vast majority of Pam's got that full list, because we developed it back when we did the shut off. 95% of them are 50, 51. So something to pursue. If you're looking to keep up that ARPA list, you know, purchasing might be in it.
So what are we gonna do with the streetlights?
I think go back to Scott and Jeff and say, look, the board approved adding 20, 25 lights tops, because we're forward, you can't come back and say.
And there, there was.
25 lots.
There was a, there was a woman who called from Sessions area concerned about. Intruders and. So, yeah, so.
He can add this, adding it every hole down the street.
I know. All right.
Visual recognition policy. Chief had brought this before.
As part of the discussion, it's worth noting that the legislature has a bill now, and it looks like it's gonna move to establish a statewide standard.
You had interest in this?
I did, you know, I mean, I have concerns about some of the policies in here. I mean, I understand some of the definitions and the terms in here. You know, and legalities of court orders and judicial reasons, but some of the other phrasing here concerns me.
Is that in a different packet or?
It was presented to us back in January, I think, February. I had to go back and pull it.
And I, when I spoke with Scott last week, I thought he was gonna try to touch base with you.
He did, he sent me an email, but it was to my wrong email address, so I never got it when it came in, till days later. Went to it, went in all, regularly check. He didn't send it to my town hall.
Now, the, the reason this, there you have legislation is because they were concerned about the original thing that came out, right?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, there's a fair amount of concern about use and misuse of visual recognition software. Civil liberties issues. Yeah. So.
Well, maybe the chief will have more guidance. He's in, what kind of training is he at this week? Maybe there'll be some discussion about that. Do we know?
No.
I'd like to, I'd like to discuss this with the chief rather than blindly signing it.
Yeah, I, I would be very hesitant on signing it as I presented. I also wondered, I mean, are we establishing a policy? If the state actually comes out with something, would it be redundant? Would it be the state policy?
I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna modify it significantly, yeah, based on the articles in the paper last week.
All right, so we'll just.
I'd actually like to see if there's a chance the chief could actually put all the policies on the OneDrive, that would be.
They are on the OneDrive. I put them all together on the OneDrive.
Where? That sorting thing.
If you go to police and then there ought to be a subfolder there. Under departments.
Yep, okay, good, yeah.
See it?
Yeah.
It's illegal to wear body armor, you know, commence. There's all 90, what, 97 of them?
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right. Town Hall Assessment of Town Hall Building, our architect. Says he can't do it, too busy, can't do it, so do we have other?
AEL said they can't do it, so I've contacted two other firms and tomorrow I'm gonna be in touch with a third. One is Ty and Bond, one is a Dietz and Company. And there's a third one. And if anyone has any suggestions.
Oh, I emailed about the one that did, did you contact them? Maybe on the board and asked about the firm that did dark birds.
Yeah, I have that. I'll, I'll be in touch with them. So in connection, in connection with this. We have this request from Senator Lesser's office for another earmark like we did last year. And so my sense is that we were, the board wants us to take a look at the windows, the library windows, the library windows. So I asked for the, I asked the director to do the count and we came up with a list of windows. And unfortunately Lesser's deadline is April first. So I called Ty and Bond this afternoon frankly and said, listen. I sent Lesser's staff a message saying this is what we want to do. They sent back saying that they need an estimate of the cost done by a professional. I asked Ty and Bond, can you get that done? They asked me to send the list, which I sent late this afternoon. They're going to send somebody out here to take a look and give us the kind of estimate that we need to submit to the legislature. And so I will get that in by the first of April.
I, I would state that in this part of the report, the windows in the auditorium are the ones that have been leaking and causing the front wall to fall out. Yeah, I know they have a question of there's more energy or heating.
Yeah.
This is the one, the windows that are causing structural damage over here. If you put your hand on the tile wall by the entrance here, the tiles get way back and forth because the windows are leaking down. If you have somebody come out, please direct them to look at the five windows over here, please.
Is that getting ahead of ourselves though, to the town hall assessment that we're trying to get?
Well, if you're replacing windows, replacement, now the first floor windows are fine because we put those in. A few years ago.
Yeah, they're nice and tight.
They're better.
They're better.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're better. We have twenty-five large windows. We have two medium windows. We have two small windows and four extra small windows. And I talked to the building commissioner about this. And he said that the large windows are going to have to be custom made. And he said currently, we could expect installation and everything at roughly fifteen hundred dollars per window. So this is, I, I did a quick look at the potential cost. We're looking at something around forty to fifty thousand dollars, I think.
Perfect.
But we'll see what, we'll see what they tell us because that's, I'm going to have to submit that.
Yeah.
With the request.
Can we roll the furnace into that too? What? Boiler, boiler, can we roll that into it?
Well, that's going to be part of the other package that we get.
But isn't it like, we.
And we're going to apply for community preservation funds to fund that study. I talked with the co-chair and he said, he thinks it's legitimate expenditure of community preservation money because of the historic. Status of the building to pay for the study.
But just a backtrack, talking to Pam today, she was saying our boilers.
Yes, we've got to get, we've got to get some work done in there because of the flooding the last time.
Right.
So we need a plumber to get in there and one of the guys that Jane had contacted said, forget about the job. We did get a quote from our plumber inspector. But.
So this, this money from Lesser's office, can we use that for this as well or is it only for windows?
Well, it depends what we put in for. Yeah, I mean, I think we could. So we do, but I think we can ask them to take a look at the. Boiler and give us an estimate on that cost. Last year we got a hundred thousand dollars. Right now for windows, as I said, we're looking somewhere around forty to fifty. We've got some room there for more. And they, they basically said up to two fifty. So I think that would be tough to get, but we can ask at least for. For that.
All right, the ARPA funding, I just, I guess, I think we have to dig on.
Here's an update on ARPA. I did ask. For an estimate for the sidewalk along Main Street. This would extend the sidewalk, the, the, the distance from where we are here, all the way down to Summers Road. It would also make the existing blacktop sidewalk ADA compliant and concrete. And as you can see, it's quite a cost. However, the design will be much less. And I think we could probably take ARPA funds, get the design done and apply for gaming commission monies, a grant. To do the project itself.
Where'd this quote come?
Ty and Bond.
And the quote for the Allen Street sidewalk was cheaper than this?
Yes, you just said though, this would be from here all the way down to.
All the way down.
In concrete.
So replacing what we have already, both sides?
Yes, no, no, one side, one side.
I understand, but I mean, so we wouldn't have to make this side ADA compliant?
We would not have to make this side, we would not have to change this side. This is a quote to put the south side from here all the way down to Summers Road.
The existing part as well?
Yes, the existing part as well, which would be widened because it has to be compliant. Right now it's, it's not. So any, any sidewalk project would require us to make the existing sidewalk compliant.
Is the blacktop not compliant? Is that why they're going?
No, it's too narrow.
No, no, I'm saying, can they not use blacktop because it's.
They can use blacktop, but. You know, if we're going to get a state grant, why not do concrete?
Okay.
So the quote for the other one, which included.
Three forty-one.
Street crossings.
Yes, three forty-one.
Less than this and it had three street crossings and.
Blacktop too, though. That was blacktop too. That wasn't.
So that wasn't, so that wasn't a concrete plan for the Allen Street project?
It was.
It was?
Yes.
It was three hundred thousand?
Three forty-one.
That was black.
And three road crossings. Wow, I'm, I'm shocked that the, that that one was so cheap when it's. Not, it's at least. I would say two thirds of length of this one.
Unless you got three street crossings.
Right, I just.
It's designed and I think.
I'd like to see them use their math on that project and this one is that, let's get it back.
Yeah, the, the widening I think is going to be a challenge. Where the blacktop is, making that compliant. Uh, it's going to be difficult and maybe they're built, I haven't seen anything. Of the design, that's just a back of the envelope estimate that they provided.
It seems like we'll have modified their previous estimate, but the other one, that just. I'm just surprised at the money difference when I look at the, you know, the length of the two.
Sort of thought is to use the ARPA funding for the design, the proposal, and then go back to the casino gambling fund for the rest.
So what I've done is at the top, I updated. The cost for the water project as well as design, leaving nine seventy-nine available. First category looks like we've decided not to do, second one is just recent information. My understanding is that the selectmen want to do the tasers, they want to do the generator. We took the capital out, which is what, that was a decision recently. We've got the excavator in and.
Okay. Well, the excavator I think is like eighty something up.
With trailer?
Oh, the trailer too.
Yeah, that's the matter with trailer.
With the trailer eighty-nine.
That's eighty-nine. And the, have they will we have a regional? School.
We had sixty in there, but in our last session, I thought that was going to come out.
Well, we want, we want to see what they're going to do. So what they've done is they've assessed us in their assessment letter. They said it was sixty dollars, nine hundred and sixty dollars for the, what do they call it? Network switches. Which why they didn't pay for the cares money to begin with when they were doing all this stuff was beyond me. I was desperate. And the other issue.
Kind of went through.
The other issue was in their, in their assessment letter, which we just, we just got that.
Yeah.
Is. It's, oh, let me look it up. Let's see if we got it here. Let's see, who's that guy? What's his name? Well, that's deleted, I, sorry. I deleted a lot of stuff. Here it is, Hammond's, Hammond of Wilbraham, okay. All right, you got, oh, I did, oh, he didn't send it to you guys?
No.
Okay, you ready? You ready? I'm sending it to you. And what's your name? There it goes. Okay, it's getting there. So in their letter, it says. So minimum local contribution, five million, four seventy-one, three sixty. Transportation assessment, four fifty-seven, five ninety-eight. Debt assessment, four seventy-four, oh fifty. Discretionary, one million, eight fifty. And total assessment, eight million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight thirty-eight. And then they have. Additionally, the school committee has approved an assessment of capital needs to the town, the amount of three hundred thousand dollars upgrade. Network switches that are in there at their end of life, Hammond share this capital assessment of sixty thousand, nine hundred and two. Including the budget is the school committee approved transfer from E and D of fifty thousand to reserve contingency. Fifty thousand to other post benefit trust and fifty thousand to maintain, maintenance stabilization fund. Which. Why would you put fifty, I already voted on it six to one, but I just question if you're going to, would you put the fifty thousand or the hundred thousand? Towards the switches rather than putting in maintenance stabilization? So you're just building up this account and never spending it, isn't it maintenance? You'd be wrong. My question about this budget assessment. I don't know if you listened to that school department meeting, school baby last week where they said they're going to deduct ninety thousand from Wilbraham's assessment. Because they want to close Thornburgers. So does this reflect more contribution on our part or are they budgeting to close Thornburgers? I don't think those answers.
There's two things, not, I can speak just as much. They have an omnibus budget. If the deduction happens, they have the capacity to shift funds inside the budget. The, in my opinion, Wilberham Finance Committee is making a statement. They're going to shorten you and if you want to keep your programs open there, you better find the money somewhere else in your budget. That would you say that's all?
Yeah.
They can't tell them where to spend the money. They're just saying, if you want all this, you're going to have to find somewhere else to spend.
But he's asking if they're cutting them ninety thousand or they're cutting us twenty thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm saying, yes.
We'll go with that.
So at this point, in terms of the projects that seem to have the board's approval, hell, we see three and it's less than two hundred thousand.
So the question is, do we want to do this sixty thousand dollar assessment? Are we going to put that in the operating budget or are we going to use ARPA because it was really man?
You can use ARPA.
Well, we do. I have two things. Two thoughts about that. A, I appreciate the school having reduced the assessment at the end of last year by refinancing the bond. That did provide a savings again, but we dropped our eighty thousand, something like that. And obviously a commensurate account amount to Wilberham. On the other hand, something like this, to be honest, it's like in my business. I plan on replacing a few computers every year. This is, to be honest, the cost of doing business. Not the boiler failing, not the roof caving in. You're going through and you're updating equipment in the building. And I don't think it's appropriate that this be a cost assessed to the town. Or something like that. I just don't, I don't see it. They might be saying, look, can you help us out like? If they had phrased it a different way down when they came back with the cares request, that would have been different. But this. Maybe it's the way it's presented works me a little bit. I'm all willing to help the school, but this is, I hate to say it. If they wanted to replace ten classrooms and desks, they're okay, can the towns help us with that? It's similar.
Yeah, and I'd like to know what they're doing with the, the capital, with the. The maintenance stabilization fund.
And that might be something. Now, the capital part, I go, I think you said the same thing before. That's heavy maintenance. That's the root, something like that. And with such a, and I don't know if you've seen the recent numbers, they have a pretty hefty E and D account. They had to rebate money back to us because it was so large. They can't accomplish it in that. I wonder.
They still have about two million in E and D.
Should they? They had to bring it down to five percent, didn't they? So I think there's an opportunity for further discussion on this.
Well, there's no hurry on this because December of two thousand twenty-four is when you're required to have the money spent or leased contracts to spend.
I, I think we should get going on the taser, the generator and the, and the, and the excavator.
We can do that.
And we can wait on this, but we can't wait that long because we've got town meeting. We're going to have to do something for town. I don't feel like it should go against town tax basis.
Yeah, I agree that it should not be in the assessment letter. I'd like to see maybe comment back to our, our representatives saying, can we talk about this assessment?
All right, I'll take care of it.
I have no problem with the money going into the capital fund, making sure that we're protected now. We're, we're both contributing.
Okay. So. I think what they're asking for originally was coming out of ARPA, right, not against the assessment, right?
Where is it? Those on ARPA and I think they went this way based on both.
I don't think they cared which how we paid for.
No, I think the first thing based on our discussion is that Wilberham, I think also.
Yeah.
I think in a different way.
Okay, so I'll obtain a motion for the tasers, the fire station generator and the excavator. Make a motion to use ARPA funding for tasers, generator and excavator.
Second, Bob, is this money we've already received or going to be receiving?
We have received half of our money. The other half is coming in in June.
Now, this is, I know you had some question before about the county money versus the town money. Right?
No, we're, we're, we're half and half.
We've got half of the whole one point five.
We have half in the door. So we're good. The question right now, what, the question is going to be, are we going to have to do a single audit? Federal rule is if you get seven hundred and fifty thousand or more in federal monies in any one year, you have to do the single audit. Which would probably be around forty thousand dollars. And we're.
I'm going to say, there's going to be a couple of firms that would be flat out with work doing all these federal audits.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get.
Which bridge is that now?
When we get the small bridge.
Drive off that bridge.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, on favor. While we're on the topic though, ARPA, Bob, I know it might be in your administrative report, but the fiber optic grant that you're working on, is that still?
That's in my report. I got a message from the town administrator in Wilbraham. Their recommendation to the board tonight is that Wilbraham would up, would go forward alone. That we're at different phases and there's a long argument and it makes sense. So I don't think we're going to do a joint application with Wilbraham.
Is this something that, Fred, you have the committee working on this? You guys meet often or sort of meet again?
We don't have any plan. We, we bet maybe one, month or two ago discussed, but um. This, this community compact grant will go a long way at getting the, the whole studies done and stuff like that.
I know there's that map in Bob's office that something that's going to go in the town report is will feed to people and.
Yeah, that'd be the, the section. I mean, it's, it's rough, but yeah. Talk about the town part, what do we have for a picture?
Nothing.
I'd still like the idea of what we were doing, you know, coming back out of the COVID thing a little. I'd still like the idea of what we were doing, you know, coming back out of the COVID thing a little positive. I know that we have plans to mark, help the marks department do some, getting more pictures inside. To show people, hey, what they're spending on, who the people are that are working with you and for you. I know Jane's done things, Becky's done things, library, of course, they're taking the pictures.
Got to be some good pictures.
I think it was a suggestion, a good suggestion of Mrs. Claus, Mr. and Mrs. Claus from the tree lighting issue. That was a heck of a turnout. If we find something good.
Send out an email.
I'm sure I. The email that I sent you.
Kate might have something because they had, they were up with the microphone.
We're on a photo contest.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Before, are you in contact with Jesse? Is he on his way here? I don't know like last time.
No, I'm not in contact with him, but.
What about Rose?
What's that?
Just to say, you know, we're prepped up. He's, you know.
I've been in touch with Rose about this agenda coming up.
We do. We have an answer. Okay, that was my accident.
Old Hill Road.
Hello.
Hi, and you are?
My name is Juanita Badassin McDonald. I am co-owner of Seventy Seven Howard Polo.
Okay, John Flynn, Don Davenport, Greg.
Hi, nice to meet you, gentlemen.
So. I wanted to have you come so I could hear directly from you what your concerns are. I don't 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 expect any resolution tonight or any kind of decision or anything like that, but we just want to hear what your concerns are directly rather than through email.
Understood. Sometimes talking is best.
Yeah, so we can hear directly. So let me just go a little bit over the history. So in two thousand and six, the town, the selectman voted to discontinue maintenance on the road. Then there was a court case, and in two thousand and nine, the court. Affirmed the selective decision to discontinue maintenance of the road. In two thousand and fifteen, if I recall, the original owner, where you live now, I guess. Sold a large parcel of the land to a third party. And then in two thousand and twenty, you bought the house. Okay. And the large parcel of land is they're logging it now.
My understanding, it appears to be.
And you've had you've had. Correspondence with the Conservation Commission. And their concern is that some some of the berms have been. Changed or destroyed, and the water is the silt. And so they've talked, they had a meeting, I think, last week or two weeks ago. With the third, the person who owns the land during the logging, and they're supposed to put. I don't know, something up there to prevent the silt from going into the river. So that brings us kind of up to date. So go ahead.
So um, from my records, it looks like this is a public way by continued use, and as it's a public way, you know. Ensuring that there is safe passage. My concern is, is that while we're addressing silt into the waterway, what's not being addressed is the erosion that's now present. And significant erosion that's taken place since we first notified the board in November. Due to the rain and the snow. I require this access as is my family for just our basic needs like food, medical services. And state required schooling. And there has been some instances where we didn't know if we would even be able to make it down the hill. This winter to get her to school because that berm and barrier has been removed without notice, without a conversation. I received a notice telling me that I'm responsible for providing the material to fix this. And as this is not a private driveway, I'm a little concerned on how this has been made. My responsibility to fix. I had thought that this was a public way that we would work with the town to find the correct action to take. So we've requested that the town actually come up to look at the road and what's been done so that we can discuss next steps.
The the coming down from your house, which side is the berm?
The left-hand side, coming from my house to, I believe, is that Scantic or Stafford Road.
Yeah, okay, going towards Stafford Road. So on the left-hand side, the berm will get removed. And it was removed because the logging trucks needed to.
I honestly don't know. You would have to ask the logging company why they. I have not measured it personally, but the entire way where it actually dips down and goes over down the actual. So that entire strip of the water. Do you have that?
I did measure it, and it's up to over twelve feet that's been removed.
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet that wasn't existing, pushed over the side. So what was a natural berm barrier?
In a natural berm barrier, you mean it was dirt and sand and?
Rocks.
Rocks.
Stuff that would stop you from going over if you.
And what about the other rest of the condition of the road? I was up there today.
Yes, I mean, obviously.
I didn't get all I didn't get all the way up with my car.
It is. It's a very difficult road to get up and down. But I think our first course of action is really to discuss the removal of the berman barrier because that's a huge safety issue.
And I have one thing that's it's also a huge liability for our business. At any point, somebody can come and do whatever they want to the road, which has been the claim. We've heard. At a different time, somebody believes they can do whatever they want to the road. And that's just simply not true. It's shared access. And our access is no greater than that. We'll just accept for the fact that we are the only residents.
What is the business?
The business that we operate.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a small family farm, also concentrated on health and wellness. We will be bringing these in in a few weeks as well, so I'm super excited.
These are good.
They are.
And and I think I read in. A lot of the emails that there was some issue with the parking of vehicles.
Say it for a moment.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm John Mark.
What was the? There was some issue with parking of vehicles?
No, 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 no. The way we found out about what was happening is I was stopped when I returned to my home for about forty-five minutes while I excavated. They started putting the equipment up, saying there was a new work in the woods. And instead, they came back and I warned them. I said, this is our sole access. We have to give permission. That's why I went running to conservation. That's all I knew was there was a cutting plane issue. So when I went to conservation, I was sent in two thousand and nineteen. All right, to the former owner.
So I don't believe there was any issue with actual vehicles other than we are required to get her up and down from the bus. It's not really a safe way for her to walk up and down. Considering that there is.
So it was more like Kate, guys, stop parking the road.
When are you gonna be blocking us in case like it's gonna be eight o'clock in the morning, we can't get her to sew?
And since that conversation hasn't been.
We have pretty current here.
Uh, yeah, I have not seen anybody up up on that road blocking it.
I mean, I drove to the end. I've got a Ford Escape. Fred, you've got the monster vehicle. You've got the Jeep, probably.
Right, no problem.
I've been through that trail. But it's all.
Yes.
I I could not tell you whether the lack of traffic was related to winter conditions versus. The people holding because there's issues, you know. I have seen loggers traveling, and I've not seen you doing further work yet.
I know a lot of traffic might have something to do with the gates closed on the summer side, so they close it for the winter on most sides of their property. So I mean, people from Kentucky, I've seen them travel.
They still keep trying to come up. They don't want it closed.
Even when they can't get up there.
What's the, as you as you enter in from Stafford Road. Just past the White House, there's a gate there. What's that gate?
Uh, you would actually have to contact the property owner. That is our. Yeah, I'm guessing.
Part of the large parcel that is sold.
There's a tractor supply gate. So. It was makeup's house. That was Bob makeup's house on the left. Stop the maintenance right after.
Correct.
So your. Concern, main concern is the.
Yes, my main concern at this moment is the berm.
And and somehow fixing that berm is getting someone to fix that berm.
Yes, I mean, it's our only access way, and so ensuring that it doesn't further erode us land, locking us. Into our property because of the work that has been done throughout.
Do you think they remove the berm to allow better access to the water?
I wish I could answer you, but I would hate to.
Their logging park?
It is all, it's, I honestly.
Both sides, both sides of the road were touched.
Correct.
Put it that way. The majority is on the left-hand side as you're traveling back down. My question is.
Oh, sorry, the west side?
Not sure. You mean driving back down to Stafford? One side, that's the left-hand side.
So going backwards, Stafford Road is the left side, the west side?
But. The claim was it was to improve access for a fifty-four foot logging truck. I'll point out that I don't drive a fifty-four foot logging truck nor have access to one. Also, it doesn't make sense from a logical perspective because they have to take a forty-five degree turn to get off Stafford on. And the rest of that road, if you were up there today, you were, that's fairly looping. What what did that even need to be removed for in the first place? So I think several people here know about my frustration because I came to the town back in November. Pretty agitated based on what somebody had done to our, to what I thought was a public way. And still believe is a public way. Everything I've been given says that it is. So I at least thought I would receive notification basically out of. School-aged child went there for business, you know, all those things. So and that is why. Talked to the chief of police and he advised that we follow whatever the protocols are in town. So I've been trying to do that. Just out of curiosity, you guys, have you lived there too the whole time and since twenty twenty, both of you?
Yes.
When you purchased the home, did you know that it was a discontinued use road?
I knew that it's not a discontinued use road. It is discontinued for maintenance, which is very different.
Right, you know, the town doesn't go up there and file.
Correct. So yes, we were aware of that.
We knew, I knew further, more than more than Lani did because I knew the former owners were related.
Back when, yeah, I remember meeting my grandfather.
Correct.
Camper crossed the way at that time, right?
Yes, sir. My understanding is there were seasonal maintenance done for years and years and years.
We used to have a grader up there back when we had a grader. That was back in nineties.
Understood. I have not had time yet to unravel the whole history of Powell Hill Road, although I believe there's quite a long one dating back to possibly the eighteen and even seventeen hundreds. But I haven't been able to pull all that out yet. There's been other things that I've had that I've had my attention. For the business, that will happen. Things new for me too. I'm a computer guy trying to turn Homestead Farm, so it's not as easy as it sounds.
Well, when you get that fiber, you didn't like it. Bob, you had something to put for the roads.
I spoke with town council quite a while ago. And her conclusion. Was that when the selectmen decided to discontinue maintenance. Because this road was never formally accepted by the town. That it is a, it was a public way by continuous use. That when the selectmen decided. To discontinue maintenance. That was effectively a discontinuation. Of this of road. And so. It is a private way according to town council. What I'm going to suggest is. I did talk to town council again. Today. Just to refresh. My memory. And she reiterated. That it is her opinion. That this is a private way. In which case the butters on both sides would have custody of the former public way right to the middle line. And what I was going to suggest was. We wanted her to come to the meeting tonight, but she couldn't do it. That we do two things. Number one, ask for a written formal opinion. From our legal counsel. And then secondly. Have her here at a at a meeting next week or the week be a week after. That would to explain the opinion to the board. I mean, this is unwelcome news, I'm sure, but that's what I was told. So.
My my recollection, and I was on the board when this happened. And I recall your grandfather coming to the meeting. And part of the discussion was. Basically, it is a town road discontinued for maintenance. And Fred, you're gonna have the longest driveway in the town of Hamburgh, basically, because he was the only person living up there at that time. Correct? This is old four, old five.
That's true.
Right, and but it still goes back to people who have. Because I think you actually, he came back for an A and R a few years later. And subdivided for a parcel. Basically creating another partial approval, not required planning. If you do that, part of justification for having A and R is they are frontage on a road. So there was an implicit acknowledgement. By Mr. Mark at that point, that this is a road that craves frontage. Therefore be a road. Moving moving forward. It does seem like it's a bit of a, I don't say a civil thing, but. Is there a way that the neighbors per se, you make a good point, but the berm has been disturbed? Yep, Mr. Switzer. Be a good neighbor. Your story. I know we made good pay, Bob, where I thought we saw the conservation meeting. Hey, look, I'll take care of the. He was gonna rip rap or something like that. Is there a way to make a resolution whereas it's a passable road for everybody who has frontage on it? And I think that's where you're trying to go. Look, we just need the road to be safe for everyone here. Who's to say somebody else doesn't want to build a, gosh, they're not making any more land. Pretty soon that land's gonna be someone else who want a house there. Look at Rocket, Rocket Dundee.
Agreed.
Gosh, when your grandpa was young, there were seven homes on it. Now there's plenty.
Absolutely. Okay, I will look forward to what the formal response is from your legal team.
We'll work on this. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Ask one last question before we get out of here. So the discontinued maintenance, that was done in the select board meeting. This was not a town, the road was not discontinued and abandoned.
Yeah, there's two, right, there's two things they could do. One is that the selectmen, under chapter thirty, don't. One thirty-two, section eighty or eighty or something like that. They could discontinue maintenance of the road. The other thing they could do was discontinue it as a road altogether.
But that has to go.
That has to go through town. That did not happen.
There was a sign posted.
It is a sign.
With the relevant documentation.
All right, thank you. Thanks for taking it. Correspondence, there's some correspondence here. We have one from. Also, premium pay things. Nothing important here. Camden Wilbraham Partners for Youth, Wednesday, twenty-seventh, for the adventure leadership forum.
I think that's actually interesting. So that's an opportunity to see what they're using at the school.
Yeah. Selectment reports.
Um, upcoming meeting both with Housing Authority where we're going to be preparing our CPA presentation. DOA Moving Strong had a great, great turnout at the Booster Clinic last week. Again, thanks to the Elms, shout out to the Elms, my people. Nurses were great.
All quiet over there. Town administrator's report.
Well, we have had ongoing problems with the printer. Lots of problems with the printer downstairs. And so I I sent it to the printer. It didn't print. And so I'll just, I put it up on the screen. Okay, I'll read it from there. Yeah. Mentioned that we had this meeting to discuss. The, let me get rid of this over here.
This has been growing and growing. Now we have three years.
This is about the MVP project and. We are now focusing on Culver replacement projects. At Main and Fisher Lane. At Glendale Road, at Ridge Road. And at Lappingbrook. These have the highest potential for flooding. In town, and that's their, what their most recent research is. I mentioned the state earmark.
My backyard.
Pardon?
How about my backyard? They didn't come to do a study then.
Private property. Private property. I've already mentioned to you, uh, the windows and the library project and where we are with that. Uh, I did put on the warrant, uh, the both articles enabling the town through the town meeting to provide a bonus that does not go into the base of a thousand dollars for municipal department heads. There are three of them that are eligible, uh, who become certified. And certification is, is important. It takes three years of study, you have to pass a test. And so we have to explain this to the town meeting, but this would be a small reward for municipal department heads, the treasurer, the assessor and the town clerk if they choose, to be certified. I think all three are certified. This would be a reward for them annually, uh, to recognize uh, that they have continued their training and schooling to keep up to date with, um, their field.
I have to say from the assessor's standpoint, you may have heard this already, that we've had very good luck at the ATB lately and I think that's based on good preparation.
Exactly, exactly. We have a good assessment.
Now this is a small, where we have saved on court cases.
Correct. Uh, this was brought to me by the board of assessors. That's how this got going. So they're making the request. Cable TV, I've got, uh, Mr. Solomon actually on the list for next week, to talk about our cable contract and what the prospects will be. Uh, we now have regular meetings of Munson, Longmeadow and Handen looking at, uh, the development of a shared conservation agent. Next meeting on April nineteenth. Uh, application for small bridge program for the South Road Bridge submitted on April first. All set with that, Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Community Compact for Fiber Optics, uh, Wilbraham has basically bowed out. I spoke to the attorney general's investigator looking into illegal activity at the Handen County Regional Retirement System. And I was told that an investigation, actually a joint investigation involving the attorney general's office and the inspector general's office is still underway. Re-sign with wave or with rave. I did send a message over to Wilbraham, uh, town administrator today to ask what their emergency communications software is. Didn't get a response yet, but, uh, uh, one of you suggested that we, it would be a good idea if we use the same emergency communication, yeah, John. And, uh, man, I, wave is awkward and clunky and, uh, but I've learned how to use it. So if we wanna continue with that, I'm okay with it, even though I was very much opposed to it. But there are other packages that are, um, I think that are, uh, better. Uh, I think the town, uh, police department wanted wave originally because it was, uh, low cost. Now the cost is going up.
Yeah, it's only was much lower than Blackboard.
No.
They're all, but what is, what does Wilbraham use?
I didn't get a response yet. I'll, I'll get a response, I'm sure. So, we did receive a fifty-nine hundred dollar grant with the cultural council. And, uh, I mentioned that and the Mill Road Bridge has been repaired at a cost of ninety-five hundred dollars. Correct, Mark?
That's correct, yeah. Uh, plus the price of green asphalt that Wednesday afternoon.
That's the report. Anything else? Well, entertain, entertain a motion, uh, to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. I determined that an open meeting would be detrimental to our litigation position and this case refers to the self-storage case.
One thing before that, just because, you know, we talked about the Laughing Brook Bridge and all of a sudden now there's two more bridges that popped on from our discussion last week. So here's Glendale, here's Fisher Road. Are these people coming to our meeting next week, you said?
Hmm.
Good, because, how many more bridges will they have next week?
I think the focus is gonna be on Laughing Brook.
Okay.
They have, they're narrowing down the prospects.
Just to say, a person who was here for the flooding, the biggest flooding problem on Glendale was actually at the crossing by Ed Lammers. Not up by Ridge Road. So, and that never got addressed. I'll make a motion to go into executive session without a return to open session for the purpose of discussing litigation where an open meeting would, uh, create, uh, upon the litigating division of the public trial.
Second.
John.